Yeah.
No, I'm not online yet. He is.
I got you. What do you think?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I'm not online yet, but I gotta do that.
I'm gonna call Dorian.
Yeah? She knows how.
Yeah, I was at that transportation thing last week, so I couldn't go to the meeting Wednesday, and then I was gone all week, and so, um, anyway. So, I have to get on top of it. Okay, so let's see, this is Prescott. This is March 12th. Oh, Halloween harvest festival. There we go, 6:30. Okay. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, for the study session today on the traffic study on Cottonwood Lane and Mission Parkway. And so Larry, will you start? Are we gonna go ahead?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present in study session format. As the mayor and council is aware, staff had introduced the concept of a potential roundabout at the Mission Parkway/Cottonwood Lane intersection a few months back. And at that study session, mayor and council had several questions related to the infrastructure that staff has actually developed, the study that is included in the council's packet this evening. We also have a presentation that will have Amy make, but what I'd like to do is hand it over to the public works team. I think Natalie is taking this first leg of the presentation, and so I'll hand it over to Natalie Stevens and let her make additional introductions.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. I'm Natalie Stevens with the Public Works Department. I'm joined by Dwayne Itell, our deputy public works director, and Clark Klatenoff, our city traffic engineer. And today, we're gonna go over the traffic study for Mission Parkway and Cottonwood Lane. And with that, I'll kick it over to Amy Moran with Wilson &amp; Company.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, madam mayor, members of the council. It's really nice to be back here again today. I know it's been a bit, so great to see some familiar faces and come to talk to you a little bit more about what we're looking at for this intersection of Cottonwood Lane and Mission Parkway. I know that you've met on this in the past, and I know you've heard sort of what are the current issues that are being dealt with right now. Obviously, there's a high volume of traffic on Cottonwood Lane as well as the conflicting volume of traffic that's trying to enter the facility from Mission Parkway. We're dealing with high speeds. We'll talk about those during the presentation, the travel speeds along Cottonwood Lane. We'll also dig a little bit deeper into the delays that are currently occurring during the peak period, particularly for those northbound laps off of Mission Parkway. I think one of the other important things to note is that, you know, there are some things going on at that intersection. With a single lane in each direction, we've got high speeds of traffic as people are slowing to make turns or stopping to make turns. People are deciding to maneuver around them on the shoulders of the road. We've got vehicles on Mission Parkway that are getting frustrated with their wait times and they're maybe being a little bit riskier with the gaps that they would accept to enter into that high-speed traffic. So those are things that we'll also want to consider as we talk about safety a little bit today as well. I think when you last met, you were really focused particularly on traffic signal versus roundabout as it relates to that existing condition. And I believe one of the questions was also, well, what about an always stop? I mean, it's an option, right? So, we dug a little bit deeper into those three traffic control conditions relative to the existing condition that's there today, which is just the stop sign on that northbound approach to the intersection. And what we did was, we looked at these existing peak volumes, and we developed, using a tool, a traffic engineering tool, simulations for each of those conditions. So what does it look like today during that peak period? What does it look like if we were to put in always stop? What does it look like with a traffic signal, and what does it look like with a roundabout? And so what I have for you here is just, it's basically a stack of those four conditions. So, in your upper left is what it is today. It's a stop sign on that northbound approach. You can see there's a long line of traffic that's waiting to be able to make that turn. The one on the upper right is the always stop control. So you can see what happens there. It's doing a pretty good job getting rid of that queue in the northbound direction, right? Those people are able to make their maneuvers because people are having to stop for them. But you can see the queue that's building up now in the eastbound direction. If you were to signalize it, traffic's moving pretty well. Still a little bit of a queue there in the northbound direction when it's approaching that red light, but it clears for the most part as, you know, a few vehicles will stack up on the eastbound/westbound Cottonwood. And then the final condition is that roundabout, and you can see, relatively speaking, there's very little, if any, queuing that's occurring. Now, this is identical vehicle conditions. You can look at the colors of the vehicle as they go through. You can correlate them from one condition to another. You can pick, for example, you see the white car going through the roundabout. You can see the two white cars approaching. You see what happens. They've made it through the roundabout. They're waiting at the signalized intersection. So these are identical volume conditions. We're dealing with the same vehicles traversing the same intersection. So a couple takeaways from that. If you look at the comparative delay, so today where we're at right now, if you look at that northbound delay under that existing condition, those cars are waiting 70 to 80 seconds, so almost a minute and a half in that line of traffic before they're able to get out and make their turn. If you put in an always stop, you can reduce that northbound delay to under 10 seconds. But you are gonna add additional delay to that eastbound and westbound traffic. So you'll see there that eastbound 30 to 40 seconds now they're waiting versus 10 to 15 seconds in the westbound direction as they approach that stop sign. Traffic signal, you can get down to manageable delays. I'm sure no surprise to anybody. We also looked at what if we were to install additional turn lanes, right? Instead of just putting a traffic signal up as it is, as the condition is today, what if we put additional turn lanes in? That benefits quite a bit in that eastbound direction. You can see it reduces from 10 to 12 seconds to about 6 to 7, and that's because of all those vehicles that are able to make that eastbound right turn on red after they come to a stop. They're not stuck behind a car waiting to go through the intersection. But you'll see that from a roundabout perspective, each of those approaches is having delays on average of under 5 seconds per vehicle. So it's a pretty substantial gain. The very final row that's in this column is just, on general, if you were to look at all of the intersection, of all of the vehicles that traverse that intersection, what is the average delay? So the total travel time, the total time people are waiting, divided by the number of vehicles that are going through. The existing condition always stop, it ranges about 22, 20, 22 seconds. You're just kind of trading who's having to deal with the delay, right? You can bring that delay down to about 10 seconds. We've got that 12 seconds, 9 seconds if you put in a traffic signal. But again, with a roundabout in total, the average car that passes through there, and this is during the peak period, is about 3 seconds. So there's quite a bit of benefit from a congestion and queuing perspective. So what else? So I know we talked about the speeds. We actually went out and collected some speed data. West of the intersection, there's posted speed, bit further down, about 40 miles per hour. As you go east of the intersection, the posted speed is 50 miles per hour. Generally speaking, both sides of the intersection, people are traveling through average speed at 50 miles per hour. 85th percentile speed, which is a rule of thumb that we used in traffic engineering. In fact, that's usually what the engineering community, their guidelines would say. You should set your posted speed to your 85th percentile speed. It's actually 56 miles per hour. We unfortunately have people who are also going through there at almost 88 miles per hour. I said, maybe it's the DeLorean for Back to the Future. Who knows? But it's a pretty high speed. So you have to start thinking about the cars that, in the way that they're traveling through this intersection, and the speed at which they're approaching this intersection on Cottonwood Lane. And that's where you start to think about the safety, right? You've got cars that are approaching thus at rather high speeds. Even today, people are maybe taking some risky gaps to be able to make that northbound left turn maneuver. When you put in a traffic signal, certainly you're slowing the speeds down as people are approaching the intersection unless you have somebody that decides that they're really gonna try to beat that red light, and then you might actually increase your speeds. You're also dealing with the fact that you may have people who are not paying as close attention as perhaps they ought to be, and maybe they think that person in front of them is gonna try to make that red light, and they're going to too. And so then you oftentimes might end up with rear-end collisions. So this is some data that we pulled for some intersections in Pinal County. The first line is five different intersections that are configured as a roundabout. The second one was 10 intersections that are configured with a traffic signal. You might ask, why are there more for the traffic signal than the roundabout? Well, there's just more signalized intersections than there are roundabouts to pick from. So we also wanted to make sure that when we were looking at these comparisons, that we were comparing apples to apples. So we also looked at intersections with fewer than 15,000 entering vehicles, and that's on a daily basis, 15,000 entering vehicles per day. We wanted to look at the sort of lower volume locations, probably not fair to compare a roundabout to a very heavily traveled, signalized intersection that has tens of, you know, thousands of vehicles traversing them. But the key here is that the roundabouts have about half as many. So that 7.8 versus the 15.9, about half as many crashes on average than the signalized intersections. We also have a value on here, crash severity index, and you can see that's a bit lower as well. That crash severity index, I'm not gonna get into the complications about the calculations, but really what it is, is an indicator of, the higher that crash severity index, the more likely, or the more there are observed crashes that are fatal crashes, or what we would call serious injury crashes. Basically, those are the crashes that often result from vehicles traveling at higher travel speeds. And I think, you know, the key here about roundabouts is when roundabouts are designed, for those of you that may have had a chance to travel through them, you know, they're designed for vehicles to enter and traverse the roundabout 25 miles per hour, maybe even slower. So it really brings those speeds down as they travel through the intersection. And so even if there is a crash, which we're seeing that there's about half as many, the severity of those crashes is typically limited to a property damage, right? Maybe a fender bender type thing. So I think that's really important to consider as well as you think about the options for this location. I believe one of the other things that was questioned for the last one was just people were kind of wondering, well, what does it cost us to do this? Is there a benefit to putting in a roundabout or a traffic signal? So kind of digging through and looking at recent bids and things for what's required, you can see the signalized intersection is a little bit more from a construction perspective than a roundabout. It's, again, it's the pavement plus all of the equipment that goes along with the traffic signal. The other factor here is that from a maintenance perspective, roundabouts are also, generally speaking, they're lower maintenance costs, again, because you're not dealing with the equipment that's associated with the traffic signal. I think somebody else had maybe posed a question, if we're anxious to get something done at this location, could we put in a portable signal? So, you know, we checked with our friends at Pinal County. They had some recent bids for purchase of a portable traffic signal, and those bids were ranging from about $175,000 to $225,000 to be able to outfit at one intersection. What's not included in that cost is the fact that you've got these portable signals that are intended to be portaled on some kind of a base. You need to put in a pad to stabilize that base. You need to put in barriers to keep people from running into the base and knocking the traffic signal over because it's not routed heavily in the ground. So those are other factors that would need to be considered as well. And I think we also had a couple questions related to oversized vehicles. I know this is often a hot button when it comes to roundabouts. This might be a little engineering for you from a figure, but what we're attempting to show here is this is the roundabout design. And if you can see the kind of blue trucks in the eastbound direction, you can follow the path of the blue lines that those trucks are taking when they enter and exit a roundabout. You can see that there's ample room for them to, and these are large vehicles. Correct me if, are there WB65s? 70s? Okay. So, these are long trucks. That's a path for a long truck. They're able to maneuver it just fine. I can speak from experience on past projects. Actually, I worked on a highway project where they were installing a roundabout on SR189 coming out of the Port of Nogales. And we in fact heard from a lot of truckers that they do often have a preference for roundabouts because they're not forced to have to always come to that complete stop and then have to deal with the startup factor, right? It takes them a longer time to get going from a complete stop. So you know, sometimes there's preference for this. I think the other thing that's important to recognize here is that when these roundabouts are designed, that center area, that center kind of median that's there, that's raised, it is constructed, or it's designed to be constructed with mountable curbs so that if you do have an exceptionally maybe oversized wide load or something like that, you're still able to navigate that because you're able to go up. So you're not going over like you would at an intersection, an actual full typical curb. You're talking about a mountable curb, right? So it helps with those types of operations as well. And I think this also displays one of the questions that we had. It was about the right-of-way. So in other words, how much additional land are we gonna have to purchase to be able to put these solutions in? So took a look at that as well. A traffic signal is gonna be about 14,300 square feet. That accounts for the room that's needed to install the poles. It accounts for the room in this particular example for adding those additional turn lanes that would be desirable. So there's, you know, the need for that pavement as well. For the roundabout in contrast, it's 12,800 feet in this diagram. So they're pretty similar. I think after all things considered, I know they came to you last time, and they proposed that the recommendation was roundabout. I think what we're seeing even with this additional information is that there are still even more reasons why a roundabout is a smart choice for this location. And I know sometimes I get from folks, well, you know, if you're putting in a, why don't we put in roundabouts everywhere, right? If they're that great. The reality is that it's very case-specific. And in this particular condition, because of the speeds, because of the volume of traffic, right, it's kind of in that sweet spot. It's not too much. And, you know, maybe even most important is the consideration that the vehicles that are of the highest movement at this location are those eastbound right turns and those northbound left turns. If you put in a traffic signal, you're going to have to stop those vehicles. If you put in a roundabout, those vehicles are not gonna be conflicting with each other because those vehicles that are the eastbound rights are going to be exiting the roundabout before those northbound vehicles that are destined to the westbound direction, before they would actually have to enter the roundabout. So you're removing that conflict altogether. So we still stand here today with a recommendation that we think the roundabout is a really great choice for this particular location. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Amy. Questions? Yes, Bob?
I noticed in your movement video.
The simulation?
Your comparison of the four.
Mm-hmm.
The roundabout had a dedicated right turn off of Cottonwood, had a specific lane for that.
It does.
Yes, I imagined it.
Nope, you are correct. It's there.
Are we looking at that, or, I like it, but I didn't see it on your later example?
That's part of the intent of what is being in design. It may be a little bit more exaggerated in this video to be able to make that distinction than what you can see on the actual design plans, but the intent would be to have that as a channelized right.
All right, thank you.
Any questions, comments? Sure, Matt.
The right-of-way, specifically on this, it's all on the south side of the road, east and west of the road. I mean, there's an irrigation ditch there. I know there's some other agriculture trees and stuff on the other side. Have we looked at the cost of, I mean, it looks to me like it might be more than just acquiring right-of-way. Like you might have to do some infrastructure changes there.
I'm gonna let Clark, I think, answer that, if you would, Clark.
Whether you select a roundabout or the traffic signal, the intent would be to not disturb the existing irrigation on the north side of the road. So there would be some shifting as necessary in order to avoid that conflict.
But on the south side, there's that, you said on the north, but on the south too?
On the north side, there's the irrigation. On the south side, there will be more conflicts.
Right. Are we anticipating that cost? I mean, not just the land acquisition, but the, you know, that might, I know we have dealt with it in other places.
Yeah, the cost estimates that we prepared were blind to utility relocation costs because both of them would have utility relocation costs. Both of them would have irrigation packs on the south side. So it was blind to that. This is not to say that the cost estimates that were developed are supposed to be, let's go to construction bids. It's supposed to be a, make it as neutral as possible to give you an idea of what the actual, just the facility itself, the pavement widening and the traffic signal.
Yes, like you said, stoplight versus roundabout, it's gonna be less than 2,000 square feet difference, I think, or right around 2,000, I think you said, which is not.
Correct.
And then the other question was, I know you did the long semi-trucks. One thing that was brought up to our attention, might be taking Sean's question here, but the width of some farm stuff, and I know we're limited on the freeway side, obviously, by the width of the overpass. So I mean, is it, and specifically combines or?
Harvesters.
Harvesters.
So I think, again, this goes to the point of the curbs would be mountable curbs, so those types of vehicles would be able to trail. I'm sorry?
Just kind of ride sideways around those curbs and just kind of hike one heel, one tire up and rode around it?
Yeah, I mean, they would be able to navigate that. I will tell you that I actually live in an area in Phoenix that has roundabouts, and I see like large, very large vehicles traverse those roundabouts on a daily basis. And they'll take it a little slower, and people are patient with them. They see them. Might be a little bit better than having to come to a stop and then start back up again, you know, constantly. So it's just a trade-off of, you know, you navigate it a little bit differently, but it's certainly navigable.
Typically, I would recommend that they're a minimum of 3 inches high, a maximum of 4 inches high. And rather than a typical curb having more of a vertical face, or sometimes in residential areas you get a rolled face, is you actually slant it back. It's something that if you have a vehicle, a car, that inadvertently falls asleep or hits it, you don't want them ricocheting off of it. It's a mountable curb that isn't going to seriously hurt a automobile at a faster speed. For a larger vehicle, it's very mountable.
And are those all still reinforced, those curbs and everything like that?
No.
No, it's just?
It's just a concrete curb.
It's just a concrete curb.
Yeah, it's just a concrete curb that's gonna be up 3 inches over 6 to 9 inches.
Okay.
So it's relatively flat.
I got a, I'm sorry, Matt, you done?
Sure. Okay.
I just got a quick question. On the speed at which both of these can be constructed, either a signal or roundabout at that intersection, what would be the quickest to solve our solutions at that corner? Solve our problem at that corner, I should say.
There are two elements. One is the paving. The paving would probably be a bit faster with the signalized intersection, but the signal equipment for a, our cabinets now are taking us about a year after they're ordered to get the cabinets. So the construction for the pavement for either of the two alternatives would put you in the four-month timeframe, but then we would have to wait an extra seven to nine months in order to get the signals, and then we would go into the construction mode.
Okay, so it should be faster for a roundabout than in the long run, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then as construction is progressing on a roundabout, I've never seen one of these done in this type of area. How would traffic be diverted with that construction? Would you have to shut off that whole intersection for a period of time to make that roundabout in the center? Or how would that work?
The roundabout itself is designed with a 16-foot of minimum pavement. And as Amy was pointing out, there is pavement widening in order to accommodate the WB67. So in this particular case, we would split the. So in this particular case, we would split the phasing of the roundabout. We would build one side of it first and then go ahead and slow traffic down and put traffic head to head on that side with maybe a little bit of temporary pavement and then build the other side to complete it.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to shut that intersection down?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to shut it down. That would be a challenge for the community.
Especially around the holidays, right?
Absolutely. We're coming to the mall.
Anything else, Sean?
That's it for me.
Okay. Anthony, anything? Any other? No, and I think that you've addressed some of the concerns that I get and, you know, hear about it. You know, speed is one of the biggest ones. You know, people are concerned with the speed on Cottonwood Lane and how to slow it down. And so you, I mean, you did a good job explaining that you have to slow down. I mean, you know, to go through the roundabout. In other, in areas that have roundabouts, do they, when you talk about some of the accidents, is it speed related or are they more just confusion related? Do you have those statistics at all?
I'm going to give you my opinion because I don't have the crash data in front of me. But my opinion, again, I said, I drive through roundabouts at least twice a day in order to get to and from my house. In my opinion, and what I have witnessed in traversing roundabouts, is that it is somebody who is maybe not too familiar with the area, they're not paying attention. Maybe some of the typical things that you would get in a crash condition anyway, right? Somebody who is distracted by something. I do think regardless of what you do, when you make a change in traffic control, there's going to be a little bit of a learning curve associated with that. You're going to have to have some education. You're going to have to have some, you know, notifications and signage about a change in the traffic control ahead and all of those aspects. So again, at 25 miles per hour, it's much more difficult to have a severe crash than it is at an intersection where you have people, you know, traversing it at 50 miles per hour.
Okay. And then Amy, you said that, you know, why a roundabout in this area? It's not like we have roundabouts all through the city. We're not recommending putting roundabouts on our major intersections. And you said it's very case specific and because of the volume, you know, the traffic. So the traffic, yes, there's a lot going on there, but it's not a high volume area. So can you explain a little bit more when you say case specific and why this intersection warrants it?
Sure, absolutely. Well, we just touched on the speed aspect of it, right? I think that's a very important consideration because we've shown you the traffic signal will work, it'll work well. I mean, it'll handle the volume of traffic, but it doesn't have the benefits, the safety benefits that the roundabout will bring for this location. I do think, again, as I mentioned, the primary flow of traffic, there's a huge volume of traffic that's heading east and making that right turn onto Mission Parkway. There's a very large volume of traffic that's heading north from Mission Parkway and making a left turn onto Cottonwood Lane. If you look now, as you've pointed out, there is a channelized right turn lane that is going to pull those vehicles that are making that eastbound to southbound right turn out of the roundabout entirely. So those, that northbound traffic now, they won't be making left turns anymore, right? They're going to be making right and they're going to be navigating their way around the roundabout. They will not be conflicting. They will not have to be waiting for those people guessing what those people are going to do, trying to figure out if it's okay for them to, to enter because those people already be removed. They won't have to be concerned about yielding. So I think the fact that you have those complementary movements in the condition of a roundabout is another very, you know, favorable factor for this location.
Okay. And is there signage when you come up to a roundabout? Is it just a sign? Do you put the vibrating strips? What is usually put before a roundabout?
So typically what I have seen is that you'll have the yield signs.
Okay.
That would alert traffic. You might have some, in this case, you might have, you know, some sort of directional signage to alert people that to, you know, take the right if you're going to Mission Parkway. It'll say Mission Parkway, stay right so they know to not enter the roundabout, but to exit before. A lot of times it's, the signs are very specific and diagrammatic where they'll actually show you, you know, stay straight to go here, veer right to go here, so.
And GPS catches it too. They'll say take it the second right or, you know, whatever, right?
Right, correct. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, no, I mean, it seems like, yeah, the semis, you know, I did do get that about large vehicles, but I would imagine those large vehicles even on the regular road have to be, you know, cautious and slow down and everything.
They manage, they manage around all the kinds of tight spaces all the time. They do a good job.
Okay.
The other thing I would like to say, I mean, if we are going to put signs up, it'd be right nice like in the valley how, you know, I-10 West, I-10 East or whatever, how they got it actually painted on the asphalt, you know? And that might kind of help the initial transition if we go with the roundabout. That might help that transition if it's actually, if you're headed east, this is where you're going, you know?
Yeah.
Something, something. South, go this way to the mall. Promenade this way or something in this lane. So might help that transition a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, so no other comments, so.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, typically at this point, we would begin part of our public outreach. I'm looking at Kevin and maybe Dwayne to ultimately get their approvals of that. And so if the mayor and council is open to that, we can start some level of public outreach on the concept. I would encourage our team to begin to work on our right of way, on the potential due diligence for the right of way as well. The last thing, the messaging related to getting these projects done is being heard loud and clear. And so identifying those, those conflicts will be important. And so we would likely start doing that before coming back to council if council is open to that, to the next steps.
Okay.
Yes.
Everyone feel good about that?
Yes.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll go ahead and close this study session. Did you guys need a break? Should we want to take a couple minutes? Are you all good?
Everybody else? Everybody else?
You guys are good? Okay. We'll wait here a minute. No. We'll just wait for these guys to kind of clear out a little bit. Sure. Okay, go ahead. Hey, hold on, we have just a minute. Yes, okay. So I know we asked Esmeralda, like if she wanted to come back, so that's why she's here. So I might just have us just go and take a, all of us, take a picture with her. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. One speaker card? Okay, okay, under public comments. Okay, ready? We'll wait for pastor.
Two pastors talking? We should hear a while.
Pastor, how are you? Doing well?
Nice to see you. We're glad you're here with us. Okay, Elsa, you ready?
Ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome. Thank you for joining us here this evening. We're going to go ahead and start with the invocation from Pastor Paul Elgin from the First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Mayor Pro Tem Herman. So if you're willing and able, if you can please stand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members and citizens of Casa Grande. Pray with me, please. Almighty Heavenly Father, bless this meeting tonight. May all of our decisions be beneficial to its citizens of this great city and may all of our wisdom come from you. And let us remember that you alone are worthy to be glorified and praised. Sole Deo Gloria, to God alone be the glory. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Matts. Okay, first item on the agenda, if you can please accept, Adriana, that all the council members are here.
So noted.
Okay, thank you. And first item, early minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 6, 2025, and except for the record, the Arts and Culture Commission meeting minutes of September 10, 25, the Planning and Zoning meeting minutes of September 4, 25, and the Youth Commission meeting minutes for September 13, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item are the claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims for October 1 through October 14, 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the claims, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And meeting agenda. We do have an executive session, so move reports up. Okay. We can get a motion for?
Move, Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to move the reports in front of the executive meeting.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. To approve the amended agenda, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And meeting agenda. We do have an executive session, so move reports up. Okay. We can get a motion for?
Move, Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to move the reports in front of the executive meeting.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have a couple special presentations today. So as many of you know, it is, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so I invite anyone personally affected, whether survivor, caregiver, or someone currently in treatment, to join me in the front. I'd be honored to have you accept this proclamation on behalf of everyone in our community who has been impacted. And I think, Michelle, are you here? Michelle, there's Michelle. I know Michelle's going to join me, but Alcoa didn't meet you up here. But if there's anyone else that would like to join us, we'll go up here and read it. Here we go, we'll do this, Michelle. Okay, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October. Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women in the United States, affecting thousands of individuals and families each year. And whereas early detection, education, research, and access to quality care are critical to reducing the impact of breast cancer and saving lives. And whereas the city of Cascaran recognizes the courage, strength, and resilience of breast cancer survivors, their families, and caregivers. And whereas communities play a vital role in supporting awareness initiatives, promoting screenings and encouraging ongoing research and education. Now therefore, I Lisa Fitzgibbons, the mayor of Cascaran, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in our city. I encourage all citizens to participate in activities that promote awareness, support survivors, and honor those whose lives have been affected by breast cancer. So whereas, and here's the signature. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're all going to have to wear pink jackets next year. Pink blazers. Okay, I know I have another one here.
I have.
You do?
I do.
I do.
Yeah, you have a pink jacket.
Yeah, he does.
Okay, our second presentation is to, we're so proud, Esmeralda, for you to come back and join us. I know you were here not too long ago and we asked you to come back when you had that crown and we're so happy that you came back and we're, you know, to, so we're excited to have you here with us. So we, of course, you know, it was our pleasure to recognize Esmeralda Sierra as she prepared to represent Cascaran at the Miss Arizona Latina Pageant. At that time, we wished her good luck and told her to come back with the crown and here she is with the crown. Is the crown here? Okay, good. Okay. So before you start, so tonight, we're proud to celebrate Esmeralda for earning the title of Miss U.S. Mexico Latina. She continues to represent our community with grace, leadership, and pride, using her platform to inspire young women and promote cultural connection and community involvement. So on behalf of the city of Cascaran, congratulations, Esmeralda. We are honored to present you with the city pin as a small token of how proud we are to have you representing Cascaran and serving as a role model for others. So we want to make sure that you wear this everywhere you go. And you can maybe put it in your crown, maybe, you know.
Place it on my sash.
I know. So we'll have you go ahead and speak and then the council would like to get a picture with you.
Yes, of course. So on October 5, I had the privilege of representing our city and thanks to the support of our amazing community, I was moved and excited to represent us all. I was voted as Miss Popular, Miss People's Choice, thanks to everyone in this community. And not only was I given that high standing for Casca grande, but I was proudly crowned as Miss Heritage. My role as Miss Heritage is to represent and share the traditions and stories behind our ancestry and our Hispanic roots. With that, my role is Miss U.S. Mexico Latina and it is the honor to share the cultural roots, traditions, and those stories. Today, I want to express my deepest gratitude towards everyone, family, friends, makeup artists, photographers, everyone who is here today to support me. This was not just my goal. I am representing everyone who has supported me, the local businesses, organizations, everyone here in the city. This is thanks to all of you that we are now in a high standing place, that we're being put more on the map. And I'm really happy to say I'm from here in Casca grande. And thank you to my directors of Miss Arizona Latina, Emma and Esmeralda, who will be here and they are here today to guide me and help me and support. But on top of that, they've brought the crown and the new sash here for you all to see if you didn't see the crowning ceremony. And I'll have them step up and introduce you all the new crowning sash for me.
Try to get a picture. Okay, now we're going to come down, all of us, and are going to get a picture since we all told you to come back.
Yeah, yeah, I am.
Did you want us here in the middle?
Sure, right up here would be great. Okay, sure, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Rather here, I'd rather practice here. And with this title being Miss U.S. Mexico Latina, in the summer of 2026, I will be competing at the national level for the U.S. Latina Crown in representing the Mexican heritage behind that. And with this title, I am committed to continue my advocacy for the bilingual and accessible health care within mental health services. And as a community health counselor, I am happy to share that with Panal Hispanic Council. It has been a privilege and amazing opportunity to bring this message out into our community. And not just to our community will this be taking place. The platform Manos Unidas, Comunidad con Voz y Acceso, will be a project representing both countries and both cultures. And I hope to inspire others to embrace their heritage, honor their roots, and use their voices to create positive change for the communities that we proudly serve. Thank you all.
Thank you, Esmeralda. Congratulations. And thank you to that amazing team. And I know your family, and Ruby's been right there, all your friends have been right there. Oh, I didn't see your other sister, hi. Where are your mom and dad? I don't see them. Oh, there they are. There. Good job, good job. You know, and just, you know, just for following your dreams and keeping, you know, that vision and, you know, just, I mean, your drive and passion, you know, is what got you here. So we're just really proud of you. So congratulations. Thank you. Okay, we have other business, I guess, but, okay. So, I know that's true. Okay, next is the consent agenda. So all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? All of them?
No.
Wow, okay. Okay, so Larry, nothing else? Okay, so if we can get motion to approve.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember B. Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hiddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. This is a time if anyone would like to address the council. I have one speaker card, Barbara Sundes, welcome back. I know you're on vacation, we were a little worried, we didn't see you the last meeting.
I know. I thought, I hope they don't think I'm giving up on this.
No, no. So Barbara, if you can please give your address.
1273 East Cardova Avenue in Casa Grande.
Okay.
I've lived in Casa Grande for 39 years, the longest I've lived anywhere. I love this town for many reasons. It's not overly large or crowded. You can go into stores, restaurants, and library and run into people that you know. You can have, we have wonderful community events that include the whole town and community. So when, I have to say that when this ordinance situation came up, I was somewhat shocked with the community reaction. I've been attending the, it's the Unsheltered Persons Action Committee, and we've been meeting for the last several months. And it's made up of people from the city, from the city who work for the city, and police officer who works for the city. And there's probably seven, eight, nine, maybe even 10 people who represent outreach service organizations. And at our last meeting, the first question that was asked was, what changes in persons' services have you seen since the ordinance? And I need to say, we had Laundry Love on October 8. And previous to that, since throughout the summer, June to now, we used to serve 80 to 100 people, and we did 500 to 600 loads of wash. On October 8, we only had 68 people and did 361 loads of wash, which is good for money, but it's not good for the people that we're trying to serve. So at least a portion of that was because these homeless people, especially the 10 people, aren't supposed to be in the city, and they're pushed out, so how do they get to the laundromat? So that's a real concern for me and for the services that we... Okay, shorten this. The committee is working hard to find an encampment where these 10 people could go and where there would be rules for them to follow, and they would be in a set situation where they could receive their services. So this is a community issue, and what I'm hoping is that, because this council is really working to come up with a place for these people. And in the end, it's gonna come down to, I think, the, everybody on the city council, it's gonna come down to the people in Casa Grande to be willing to help these people so that they're in an encampment that, and it's not bothering a lot of other people. It'll be fenced in, and they will be able to receive the support and the needs that they have. You can't do it like, so Laundry Love's an example. If they're way out far someplace, how do we help them? And I know St. Vincent de Paul, I know it. I know St. Vincent de Paul had the same problem. They had lots fewer people, because how do they get in? So anyway, I'm really praying and hoping that the community and all the city council people come together to support whatever, whatever we come up with for this encampment for them.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there anyone else?
Sure.
Hi, ladies. If you can give your names, and then do we need both of their addresses?
The school address.
School address, okay.
Hi, my name is Lidiana Rodriguez, and I go to Vista Grande.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Hernandez, and I also go to Vista Grande.
And we're with the city's youth commission, and we just wanted to talk a little bit about our upcoming Day of Shred and our experience volunteering at the National Day of Service.
This Saturday, October 25, is Youth Commission's Community Shred Day. We'll have a shred truck on site to securely dispose of your documents. We will shred the first five boxes at no charge, and after that, donations to the Casa Grande Youth Commission are appreciated. This event is free and open to the public, and it is at 9:00 a.m. to noon at First American Credit Union. We hope to see you guys there.
Thank you.
So on September 20, the Casa Grande Youth Commission went and volunteered at Carmacnat for National Day of Service, and we painted bathroom walls. I also personally painted dugouts with the Vista Grande cheer team at O'Neill Park. And it was overall just a really great experience. It was really nice to see so many members of the community come out solely to support and uplift the community and work on improving it. And so it was just a really nice day, and it was great.
Great, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. And Gloria, if you can give your name and address. Name and address, yep.
Absolutely. I'm sure you guys have memorized it by now. Gloria Johnson's story, 1245 East Laurel Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona, also Rodeo Road, hint, hint. I'm here to publicly say I am not thrilled about or roundabout, and I understand there's more work to be done. But I think we need to look at how the traffic light would be beneficial, too. I think we're looking at one side of the coin right now and not really giving time. And I was thrilled that we're having steady sessions or open public meetings. As someone that zips down cottonwood a lot, I prefer a traffic signal. Most people are coming back into town, and I wait patiently, but I feel like people coming, and I'm still trying to grasp the roundabout, but I just can't see it going in at that time. And I also want to commend the Youth Commission. I love their shred days. I save up my boxes, and they're doing such a great, worthwhile thing for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comments, and there's nothing else except the executive session. So we'll go ahead, and if there's any reports, we'll start with reports. So how about if we start, Sean, do you want to go first?
Sure. I had a great weekend out here, it's Saturday. We had the first ever Panal 40 Copper Country Music Festival. Turned out really well. We had great attendance. A lot of the city showed up for it, and I was really glad to see everybody there. Turned out fantastic, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that attended as well.
Anthony?
No reports, other than I enjoyed myself with the board of commissioners, the dinner that we had. We had a great time and look forward to next year.
Thank you. Matt?
Yes. Again, the board and commission dinner, I think the clerk's office and the PIO office are putting all that stuff together, and all the departments. And that was the best, I've been to a couple, and that was one of the best ones with the entertainment and everything. It was a lot of fun. And then one guy said, thanks for the raise this year. I go, oh, you got two pieces of chicken then. Thanks to all our board and commission members, I mean, they do it for the dinner base. Now they do it because it's community service, so thank you. And the Rotary Club's Oktoberfest went off very nicely after the rain, when I thanked the whole community for coming out, the mayor for showing up in her journal, and right on time to speak.
I did.
If you didn't see the paper, pretty decent picture. But yeah, thanks to the community, raised over $30,000 for the Rotary Scholarship Program. Had a band, lots of fun, good coverage from the paper, Jody, thank you. And everyone that came out, Larry of the club, everyone, it was a great time. Couldn't do it without the community and all of our supporters. And then the shredding, the girls just talked about them. But it's also e-cycle as well, don't forget. If you want to bring your old computers, sometimes people bring like answering machines and telephones, and the kids are like, what is this? But we just throw them in the thing, so TVs, computers, any of that stuff. So bring that as well. So we look forward to seeing you 9:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday at First American Credit Union, 1001 North Panal.
All right, thank you.
And thanks to our Public Works Department for bringing trucks and cones and everything, too. They're a big part of it.
Yeah, good. Okay.
No report.
Okay.
Thank you. No reports.
No reports.
Well, you, there is a report that we were all there, and that was our strategic planning session. And so just wanted to thank all the council and the staff for, you know, for participating. And, you know, it's great, especially with our new council members to, you know, get input and, you know, direction on, you know, how we want to see the city move forward. So I just want to thank everyone for just being open-minded and sharing your ideas and thoughts, and same with all the staff coming in and participating in that. So thank you very much.
I never.
You never went.
Never.
Yeah, that's it. Inside joke, we'll talk about that later. As far as events coming up, the Veterans Day Parade. So if all of you were, I think we're trying to finalize how, with, how we're being transported in the parade, but it's November 1 at 9:00 a.m. Always a really fun parade, so put it on your calendars for the council members and for the community to come out. This Thursday is the Harvest Festival, and that is at Paul Mason. You know, of course, this is our Halloween Fest. It's such a great, great event, and I just love it. You guys do such a good job, Danny, so I'll be there, except I told him I'm not gonna be a judge, because that is way too hard for all those little kids and judging on that. There, it's just, yeah. So if any of you want to judge, please let Danny know, but that's something. So thank you, no, really looking forward to that. And I believe the next day is the Downtown Street Halloween, isn't that the next day?
It's on the 25th.
Yes, on the 25th.
After you shred?
You go there, downtown, yes. So a lot, lot going on. And yes, you know, thank you to Rotary for a great event at the Oktoberfest. I was a little nervous with the weather, what was going to happen, but it was just so exciting to see the number of people there of all ages. You know, you had all, you know, walks of life and people really enjoying it and having a good time. So, so thank you. And I was at the Copper Country Music Festival, and I must say, I'm not a country person, but I really, really enjoyed it. And I'm so grateful to, again, Panal 40 for bringing these types of entertainment, you know, the, you know, to the city. I mean, it was great seeing these young people. And several people came up and said, thank God we can have this right here in our backyard, and we don't have to go up to Phoenix. So seriously, please thank, and I tried to tell as many of them that I saw that night that, I mean, there was like over 2,000 people, I believe, there, so.
Yeah, I'll relay it on to them.
Yes, please do, it was really, really good event, had a great time. Boards and commission, thank you to the, our clerk's team, PIO team, and all the staff for just a great night, again. You know, so many commission members just were truly grateful for us, you know, just doing that. You know, and the least we can do for all these people that dedicate so much time and energy to all of our boards and commissions. So Adriana, thank you to you and your team and to the PIO team. And thank you to all the staff, you know. I, I hope you see going to this event, that how people love being engaged. You know, we were in an interview today for one of the boards and commission, and this man just said, I just want to help. I just want to do whatever I can, you know, whatever I can do to be in service of the city. And so I, I just hope we all remember, and especially our staff and us, that, you know, people want to, want to engage. They want to be involved, they want to, you know, share successes and give input. So we were, we're just truly fortunate to have that number of people that want to give their time and energy to serving, you know, on these boards and commissions, so. And then last week, I was at a transportation summit for rural transportation. It was great being there with my fellow mayors from Panal County. What I got out of it is we're all facing the same challenges when it comes to transportation infrastructure, everything going on when it comes to funding, you know, projects. And we're all fighting for monies from ADOT, which their numbers are down. They haven't raised the gas tax since 1990. So there's so many challenges with that, and now with electric vehicles. You know, you have the, you know, the reduce, you know, tax that come in there. So we're all facing a lot of challenges, but it was great seeing what some of the other cities are doing. And, and, you know, we're all kind of trying to get the same, the same funding here, so. But, you know, we, we are definitely, we all know that that's one of our priorities, is transportation infrastructure. And I think that, you know, we have to continue because we're not getting, ADOT isn't there. You know, it's not like they're there just with open arms and money, you know, giving it so, as much as we can continue to do. But, but it was great being with some of, some of my fellow mayors there, so. Great week at that, so I think if there's anything else, nothing else. So we'll go ahead and close, and if I can get a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So thank you, everyone, for joint, coming tonight, and we'll be going into executive session. Yeah, I know that, that transportation basis. No, no, all over the state, yeah. It was all over the state. Kelly, thank you.